Good morning.
The May 24th, City Council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Pastor Servant Byron Woods, Grace Christian Bible Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Counselor Kimberly Rafferty from District Two. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father, Holy Father, sovereign of all that exists, we pause now as your chosen one, you elected officials make ready to do your bidding. We thank you for the gift of life. We respond to your goodness, your grace, and your greatness with gratitude and thanksgiving. We pray now for unity, that your presence may be known in this meeting. Pray now, Lord, that you would open the curtains of opportunity and present once again Birmingham to the world. I pray in the name of Jesus that the council, the leaders, the mails, wisdom, their knowledge, their unity, their love would be on display to the world. And, Lord, that it would draw and attract corporations, businesses, investors to come here and seek refuge. Let this your people, Lord, be an example to the world of how to obtain greatness. We pray, Father, that the sins of this city would be repented of and confessed. We pray that you would watch over the city so the city may be safe. We pray that you would build this house that it may withstand in the storm that comes its way. Father, I pray now that this meeting would be the best meeting that they've ever had. I pray in the name of Jesus that they would work together. Your will would be accomplished in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the road, Ms. Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott, President, President Pro Tim Hoyt. Councilmember Lundee. Councilmember Rafferty.
President.
Councilmember Roberson. Councilmember Parker.
Morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Good morning. The minutes from March 1st through May 17th are not ready. Let's move with the consideration of the consent agenda.
The consent agenda begins on page two with items two and three. Item four has been requested to be removed. On page three, item five. On page five, item 15. On page six, items 17, 19, and 20. On page seven, items 21, 22, and 23. On page eight, items 25 through 28. On page nine, items 29 through 33. And on item number 32, and on the third line it says for the city, the Department is supposed to be the Public Works Department. On page 10, items 34 through 36, and item 38. On page 11, items 39 through 44. And on item 44, the amount should be $4,506.52. On page 12, items 45 through 49. On page 13, items 50 through 52. On page 14, items 55 and 56. And that completes the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott.
Yes, I had several items I'd like to place on consent. The first, on page three, items six, seven, and eight. On page four, items nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Six, seven, and eight.
Six, seven, and eight on page three.
Yeah, those need to be, just make a note that those recommended by Economic Development Budget and Finance. And then you say 19, 11, and 12?
Yes.
Same thing.
Nine, 10, 11, and 12, they all say recommended by Budget and Finance Committee. I guess they left off the, no, what's on there?
It just says submitted. But there was a recommendation from Budget and Finance last night for all of those.
Okay, on page five, items 13 and 16?
I think item 16 needs to refer back to Transportation.
When?
At the next meeting. I think.
It's already been referred?
It has not been, but I think it needs to be.
Oh, this is the one about the lighting.
Yeah.
The lighting on the interstate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we referred it last week.
No, this is different than the one.
This is new lighting?
Yes. But it'll stay off consent. Go ahead.
Okay, so 16's not on consent. Okay, on.
16, 13 is on. And that should say recommended by Economic Development Budget and Finance as well. Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Abbott.
On page six, item 18, I just wanted to ask the funding source. And it could be on consent if we have a funding source. 18 on page six, it's the Empowerment, Inc., Steel City Jazz Festival.
Counselor, that money is going to be coming out of the mayor's office. So part of it is in kind and the actual cash part will come out of the mayor's office budget.
Okay. So that could be on consent. Item 18 on page six.
How much cash and?
I think it's $63,300.
Okay, that's.
$63,333, something like that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's it, I remember.
Okay, then on page.
You want to leave it off consent?
Yes, please.
Item 18?
Yes.
Okay, and then on page 14, item 54. And on page 15, items 58 and 59.
54.
54 on 14, and on 15, 58 and 59.
Okay. Do we have any other council members wish to speak to an item that has been, that wish to speak to the consent agenda? I think you got it covered, Counsel. Counselor Abbott. Counselor Scales.
I'm sorry. On page 15, item 58, what exactly is this? Is this, is this community development?
Counsel, I can address that for you. Now, this is the Community Policing Revitalization Committee, the formerly Weeden Seed. So that's, she's providing the service as well.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, Counsel, President. On that item also, it says recommended by the Planning Engineering Permits Department. And that mistake is just, it should say recommended by the purchasing agent on item 58.
I did have one more question, Ms. President.
Go ahead.
So, item 58 can remain on consent. Let me ask you this. So is this, is Ms. Hudson providing this service until June 30th, if that's what that is? Okay, and which Weeden Seed office is she going to be working out of?
Out of the main office, out of Huffman. At the Huffman, yes. East precinct.
Thank you, sir.
You have any more?
No, I will oblige.
Counselor Lundee. Yes. Okay. All right. Do you have any members of public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. Any members of public who wish to speak to an item that's been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing, you can approach the podium. All right? Do we have a mover and a second on the consent agenda?
Counsel President, did you want to leave item 17 on the consent agenda or were you taking 17 off?
That was item 16.
We're going to leave 17 off.
Let 17 is still on, no one objected to that.
Oh, and one other correction, I'm sorry. On page six, item 20, it should, the amount should be $54,227.
Okay. All right, do we have a mover and a second?
Mr. President, I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right. Abbott, Scales. Ready to vote.
Hold on one sec. The voting is started. The vote should be up.
That item passes. Call up item, consent agenda passes, 37.
Item 37. Item 37 is on page 10.
10.
A resolution supporting the principal and staff of Inglewood Elementary School.
All right, we have a mover and a second?
Move item.
Second.
Lundee, Abbott, Counsel Parker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank the council and everyone. Mr. Lundsey, Principal Lundsey, just wanted to come up and sometimes tell you thank you for all the good work you're doing. If Principal Lundee would come up, he's the president of Inglewood School Elementary. And I understand we sometimes do that through presentations, but I wanted to especially just come up and, and want you to say a few words about all the great things that have gone on at Inglewood Elementary. And I know some of the neighborhood, Mr. Williams is here. If we could just keep it very brief, but just wanted you to just address the council and just want to always just tell you thank you for all the hard work you're doing out at the Inglewood and the part of the family.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. President.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I want to say thank you for having me, Councilman Parker. We have with me my family, my beautiful wife, my daughters, parents, other family members, aunt, cousins. You all can come forward, sister-in-law, brother.
You brought the whole family, then you come on up.
Assistant Principal Reverend Hunter. We have Mr. David Van Williams, who's with the Neighborhood Association at Inglewood K.A. School. We're doing some great things there. First of all, we are a choice school for the second consecutive year due to our academic achievement. We're not on the school failure list. Thank you. We're continuing to grow. And in that school, we're providing students not only opportunities to be successful inside the classroom, but opportunities outside the classroom as well. We're bringing in many programs that, that provides diversity from the arts within our school. Athletic teams are getting better. Soccer team has made it to the championship three years in a row. This year, we were runner-ups. The previous two years, we were middle school champions. We have a great support of parents, we have a great student body. One thing I'm most proud of is our students working to increase academic achievement. We've had a great tutorial program this year. We've had an increase in partnerships this year. And all of that has helped to increase our student achievement and also provide our students with a wide range of experiences, again, inside and outside the classroom. One challenge that we have at Inglewood is providing our students with and wealth of experiences. And so when we provide them that opportunity to recognize things outside of the school, outside of the community, then that instills pride in them, that motivates them, that helps them to not only look forward to leaving the school and preparing for high school, but preparing for greater heights. So we're doing great things at Inglewood. We have a great student body, we have a great parents, we have a great faculty and staff. PTA is great. And we just want to continue to move in the right direction as our students deserve that and more. So I want to thank you all for having me this morning, Councilman Parker, Mayor Bell in his absence, and all of the other council persons that's present this morning. Just want to thank you all. And let me say this, the success of the school is not about me, it's about the students, it's about the faculty and staff, and the hard work that they put in. I'm just a representative, a representative of the school, but the real work is done by the students and the faculty and staff. So thank you.
I just wanted, before you, before you sit down real quick, I want to thank Dr. G., the superintendent, and Dodgy Hendricks, and all the other board members at the school board. And also want to give a shout out to, and kudos to Counsel Abbott for the gathering we had last week. I thought it was very important and very timely as far as we're all collaborating, working together. So anyway, I just want to thank you, thank the neighborhood, and thank everyone. And we'll look for, for greater things moving forward in the Inglewood community. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote.
I don't.
Resolution.
Voting is started. Counselor Scales and Counselor Tyson. The vote is up.
That item passes. Next item. We'll go back to item one, but let's go to item 14.
Item 14, which is on page five. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Birmingham and the city of Fulton Dell for the purpose of providing reciprocal fire and rescue assistance on a first response basis utilizing the nearest units to the incident from either party, and to otherwise assist upon request with fire or accidents that are too great to be dealt with unassisted. The city's obligations pursuant to this agreement will be funded as part of the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Services Department's annual budget, and this is the first reason, so we'll need unanimous consent. Mr. President, I move for unanimous consent.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I move the item.
Second. Do you have any speakers to this item? All right, we're ready to vote.
Voting is started.
Can I ask for clarification on this item? Mr. President, because I do have a point of clarity. I, I guess I just wanted to make sure when we say about providing reciprocal fire and rescue assistance, does that mean that it is, is to take care of the areas of Birmingham that's bordering Fulton Dell?
Both.
Both?
Basically.
Are we using city resources? I'm sure we are.
There's an agreement. Like, there's an interlocal agreement that we have in place with Vestavia, the city of Vestavia.
Okay.
And several others where.
So any, any contiguous bordering municipality?
Basically, if the fire station is closer to the, whatever, the call, that if it's a Vestavia, or in this case, if it's an Irondale Fire Station closer to, or this Fulton Dell Fire Station closer to the, the place, the location than the city of Birmingham, then they can handle it that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And vice versa, right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Parker, oh, is he out? Counselor Tyson.
All right, that item passes. Next item, 16.
Item 16, also on page five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into standard project resolution, traffic control signals, and/or roadway lighting maintenance agreement and plans with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for project number ACIMF I-059383, I-5920 interchange modifications at I-65 from west of Arkadevia Road to east of I-65 in the city of Birmingham.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. All right, we're ready to vote.
The second was Counselor Lundee.
Lundee's.
I thought we were referring this item, Mr. President.
She said it was just lighting.
Well, because isn't 16 and 17 companion, Mr. President? For clarification? They are not?
They're not companion, but they, but they're both dealing with lighting though, aren't they?
Can I have, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Counsel Tyson.
This is only lights, right?
This agreement is for some of the lights on the interstate with the ramping and stuff that's coming through, it's going to affect some of the high mass lights, so they're going to have to be taken out and then moved somewhere else. And because the lights are being moved, it requires a new agreement. And as well as there can be some signal changes at 17th Street and Abraham Woods and 11th Avenue, it's just kind of some housekeeping things to make sure that we have a current agreement with Aldot for all the changes that are going to occur during the bridge replacement.
Mr. President.
You done? Counselor Scales?
So let me ask you this, and, and, Mr. President, if I'm out of order at this time, you can let me know, but this is really relative to item 16 and 17? So when we're talking about lighting west of 65, are there, do we have any plans forthcoming in other areas of the city? Or this is just?
The, these agreements are for construction-related projects that Aldot is doing. And like I said, the, particularly 16, it's, it's dealing with changing some of the existing light that's there. Like I said, some of the lights have to move because it's in the path of a, of a new ramp that's supposed to come in, so that light has to be moved over so many feet to get out of the path of the ramp.
Well, I'm, I'm going to support it because it's my colleague's district, but, but let me just say this. I, I wouldn't tend to think that the median to Warrior Road, which does need a lot of work, that, that, I mean, there's some development there?
Yes, Counsel.
There's some construction there?
Yes, ma'am. We had a grant from Aldot to actually redo the entire Inslee Avenue from the interstate 5920 going south toward the crossplex. So that will, that will involve moving utilities out of the way.
It's what now?
That will involve utility relocations and new lights coming on Inslee Avenue.
Okay. But I just want to know, do you, do you have any plans for any other parts of the city? Simular in nature?
Counsel, yeah, these are, you know, project-specific. You know, every time we do a project with Aldot, with a grant that requires relocating utilities, we bring in agreements to modify that agreement to show the new locations.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Counsel Abbott?
Yes, Mr. President, I wanted to ask, I noticed that all the lights were out around the University Boulevard interchange this weekend. It was extremely dark. Is that one of the upcoming projects possibly?
Yeah, they were all out.
Or are we going to fix those? We're going to do, okay, thank you. That's all I wanted.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Okay, voting is started. Counselor Tyson and Austin. Oh, you have staying, I see. Thanks. The vote is up.
That item passes. Next item.
Would you like to go back to item number one?
No, 18.
Item 18, it is on page six. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Empowerment, Inc., under which Empowerment shall host the Steel City Jazz Festival in Birmingham Lynn Park, June 3rd and 4th, 2016, and the city will provide incentives in an amount not to exceed a total of $150,000.
Yeah, mover and a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Lundee. Go ahead. Counselor Scales, you had a question?
So I want to make sure that I have a clarification in terms of the breakdown, Mr. Bernie, for this item. And you said, how much is it in kind and how much is it cash?
The, the cash part is $63,333, and the balance of that will be in kind, which is roughly about $87,000.
Eighty-seven?
Yes.
Okay, so being that it's in kind, it got to be taken from somewhere. Where, where is it?
Well, it's already budgeted, because when I say in kind, we're talking about the police, the fire, EMS, and so forth. So they're already on the clock, and it'll be charged to that department's budget.
Okay, and we have enough to sustain that, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so, and you said $63,000, what was the other for cash?
$63,333 roughly, yes.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you this, just for understanding, because I know that this event generates economic development for the city. What is, what is the number in terms of the, the money that you would say that the city takes in as a result of this event happening in Birmingham?
Counsel, I don't have that number with me, but as you know, the, when, when people see successful events, it breeds successful events. And the, and we've got people that are actually coming in from other cities and states to come in and actually enjoy this. So I'm sure we'll be able to get some read from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So we think it's well worth the investment, because again, success breeds success.
So this $63,333 is coming out of what, some kind of marketing budget for the mayor, out of the mayor's own?
It will come out of either professional services or equipment rental because of the source of, how the fund will be used.
Okay. Then one last thing is, seemingly this is an annual event, why aren't we doing like a multi-year agreement with this entity?
Well, Counsel, we're actually doing it based on them approaching us for support event, you know, hopefully, you know, any event that comes to the city will use us as a seed, money first, and then grow to not need the city's support. So, so that's what we're hoping here as well.
Okay. Well, Mr. President, at the appropriate time, while we're germane to this particular item, I would like to think that at some point, because there is another festival that I know that the city, that the mayor has proposed in his budget in regard to City Fest. And so I'm hoping that, that we will graduate to maybe this event being one that the city can look to call its own as well at, at some phase. I do understand about, you know, us being seed money versus us being the ultimate sponsor, but I do think that being that. But I do think that being that it is a plus for the city, that at some point that we look to try to make sure that this is written in the budget, just like City Fest is. I think it behooves us to look at it that way, and if the mayor was here, I'd say the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
We're ready to vote.
Vote is started. The vote should be up.
Alright, that item passes. Next item.
Item twenty-four.
Yes.
And item twenty-four is on page seven. A resolution authorizing the incorporation of the Birmingham-Jefferson County Port Authority under chapter ninety-four of Title XI of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, and the election of directors of the authority.
Alright.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we recommend this to Transportation Committee.
Second.
So, we're moving to refer it to the Transportation Committee.
Correct.
Ready to vote. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I, of course, I wanted to ask a question about, but I wanna make sure that we're doing the appointments here, 'cause I don't know where these people came from. We certainly didn't come up with them, unless it was like, anyway, so.
We talked about that.
That was an item of curiosity for me, so if the committee would look at that, I'm sure they will.
Counselor Rafferty?
Yes, and we've been waiting for these documents for the last three years, and it's quite frustrating to find out that we've got them just before the very last grant for creating a port authority is going to expire. So, first of all, we do have to be intentional with our delay and make sure that we meet the deadline for the thirtieth of June. But at the same time, we were also promised the Economic Feasibility Study in the spring of this year, which we have not received. I also do not see an intergovernmental agreement, because the port has to be created in a partnership with the county, and the appointments are two, two and one. And I see three appointments by the city on here, no communication from the Jefferson County Commission. Also, I will note, Counselors Austin and Lundey, when we had the COW, the combined COWTCC meeting, Counselor Austin, you were there, Counselor Lundey, you were there, Counselor Abbott was there, I was there, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Knight were there, and then representatives from the other three commission officers were there. So, all of us were expecting this feasibility study. All of us were expecting the intergovernmental agreement, and then all of us, I don't have a problem with the document, except the appointment section, because this is, the due process is laid out by the state. So, what's in it is fine. But I do think there's some serious holes in dropping this on us at the last minute with no proper review. But I would encourage the council president to encourage the committee to move expeditiously on getting that group meeting together and making sure that we have that application into the federal government before the end of this month.
Mr. President?
Because it's the only funding option that we've got at this time.
This month or next month? Which month?
Next month.
Next month.
I'm sorry, it's still May.
Counselor Scales?
Well, Mr. President, isn't Counselor Rafferty on transportation?
Yeah.
So, I think that she'd be very instrumental in making sure that the questions that we just mentioned are brought before the committee, and she's brought everybody up to speed. It's just the fact that the chairman of the committee needs to be brought up to speed. And out of due respect for the committee process, that's the only reason why we're referring it. So, I think she'd be very good for that committee. And since she's on it, then all those questions that we probably have can be answered during the vetting process. Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Rafferty.
Ready to vote to refer it to the Transportation Committee.
Okay. Vote is started.
They meet.
Counselor Lundey.
That item passes to be referred, just so you all know, Counselor Rafferty, the port authority meets every fourth Tuesday.
Port Authority?
Of Mobile, or the state. It's in Mobile. So, we'll have it together. Alright. Yeah, that item will be referred to the Transportation Committee. Next item should be item, call up item fifty-three. And we have addendum items sixty and sixty-one.
Okay.
Park is traveled.
Item fifty-three, excuse me, on page thirteen. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Barbara Harris, Principal Analyst, Mayor's Office, Kansas City, Missouri, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, April eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend Project Safe Neighborhood Workshop. April Odom, Director of Communication, Mayor's Office, Washington District of Columbia, one thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and eleven cents, April eleventh through the twelfth, two thousand sixteen, to attend Department of Interior. April Odom, Director of Communication, Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, five hundred, six eight, six hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents, May thirteenth through the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend UNESCO Project Work Session. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Washington District of Columbia, one thousand thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents, February twelfth, two thousand sixteen, to attend congressional meetings. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Washington District of Columbia, one thousand two hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, April seventh through the eighth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA congressional meetings. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Washington District of Columbia, one thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-one cents, April twelfth through the thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA congressional meetings. Haronda Pinney, Administrative Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Portland, Oregon, one thousand nine hundred dollars and twelve cents, April thirteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend National Forum for Black Public Administrators, Form two thousand sixteen. Silbo Scarborough, Mayor's Assistant, Mayor's Office, Portland, Oregon, two thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents, April twelfth through the seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend National Forum for Black Public Administrators, Form two thousand sixteen. On the addendum, item sixty, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Camila Gray Lewis, Committee Assistant, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, five hundred twenty-six dollars, May twenty-sixth through the twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, to attend UNESCO meeting. Camila Gray Lewis, Committee Assistant, City Council, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, zero dollars, May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA and ADECA meetings. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, zero dollars, May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA and ADECA meetings. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Memphis, Tennessee, one thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents, May twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, to attend UNESCO meeting. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, nine hundred twenty-nine, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents, May twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, to attend UNESCO meeting. And item sixty-one, a resolution approving the advanced expense accounts of city employees.
Do you have a move in a second?
Move it.
And did you call sixty-one? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, alright. Second? Lundey, Austin, Counselor Scales?
Mr. President, can someone answer, what is UNESCO? What is a UNESCO meeting? What is that? Let's not all talk at one time.
Counselor, I can ask someone in the back to come out and answer that, but, you know, the city has been trying for the last couple of years to get the World Heritage Designation, which was to make the city, I guess, a place for people to come worldwide to visit us. I can get the actual name of what UNESCO means for you shortly.
Yeah, well, I was about to, just bear with me, Madam Chair, because that's exactly where I was going with that line of questioning. So, is this having to deal with the National Park designation too? Or, okay, 'cause, how about we just table this, Mr. President? Because then I'd question, why is the chair of the park and recreation and public improvements and cultural arts is not a part of the UNESCO meeting? Yeah, so, I'd like to move, Mr. President, at this time, if it's appropriate, for us to table the item regarding item number sixty, if that's okay, sir, at this time till we can get the answer we're looking for. Yes, related to that travel, I'm just interested in knowing what that is.
Okay, so, we'll vote on item fifty-three and sixty-one?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll delay item sixty, or we'll table it until the end of the meeting, until we get some answers to it. So, we're gonna vote on item fifty-three and sixty-one.
Okay.
Counselor Tyson? When is time for us to vote?
The voting is started.
Anyone else's name up there?
Huh? Okay, that vote is up on fifty-three and sixty-one, and we need a motion to table sixty.
That item passes, let's move to table item sixty.
So, move?
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Let's go back to item one.
Item one.
Page two.
On page two. A resolution relative to the application of the Birmingham Derby Club, Inc., for lounge retail look-a-class one license to be used at the Birmingham Derby Club, Inc., twenty-four oh four Derby Way, Birmingham, at the hearing of our interested parties. And I believe there was a request for a four-week delay.
Yes, it is. Move for a four-week delay. Austin, Scales?
Okay, the voting is started. Counselor Tyson? That vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item.
Okay, that'll be item number four?
Yeah, that's withdrawn.
Also on page two. It's going to be withdrawn?
Yep.
Okay.
That does it for the council agenda. Oh, you have, Mr. Bernie, you have the, so, you ready to address item sixty? Let's move to, take that off the table.
So, move?
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright.
Counselor, UNESCO is United Nations Education, Science, and Culture Organization. The, there was a memo that April forwarded to all council members on Saturday. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see it, but it sort of gave you a breakdown as to the things that they were working on. The Counselor Parker has actually been involved with several of the activities up to date. So, that's why the two are not necessarily running together, but they are related. So, they sort of complement each other. And I'll be glad to share this copy with anyone who does not have one.
Counselor Scales, and then Counselor Tyson.
I'll give it to Counselor Tyson first.
Counselor Tyson?
So, since I'm over there, Park and Rick and the cultural art, when would I be brought up to task on this and invited to the meetings? Because I never, I'm never, I haven't received an email for number one, and haven't been brought up to date on anything concerning this trail.
Counselor, to date, I think the mayor had asked Counselor Parker, I guess, in his capacity to do that, be glad to get back with him, I'd like to say Counselor Parker's been involved up to date.
He's not the chair of the committee.
I can understand that, and we'll make sure that you're completely brought up to date.
Yes, and involved in the meetings, because you're gonna make me feel like, because I'm a woman, that you're gonna overlook me.
We'd never do that.
And then stick with Parker. That ain't the way it's raining. That's not the way you respect a person that's a chair. And I want my respect, because I am assigned to this committee.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President?
Counselor Scales?
Yes, Mr. President, and then I did tell what Counselor Tyson just said. So, let me then ask this question. Is the mayor the appointing authority for those who attend the UNESCO meeting?
Counselor, I'm not sure if there's a need for an appointing authority in this particular instance.
So, then let me ask this question, then respectfully. Because I probably should direct it more to Mr. Patton. I saw him giving you the okay to speak. So, let me ask you this, then, Mr. Patton, in the mayor's absence. So, being that it encompasses what Counselor Tyson's committee does, then, and I even sit on that committee. So, my question would be, if there's no appointing authority, and this meeting is taking place in Memphis, there has to be some type of invitation, there's something. You don't just show up to a meeting, and then if you say you're representative of the city of Birmingham, there has to be something that basically says that this is who's representing the city of Birmingham in its interest, or the council in its interest on behalf of the city of Birmingham. So, is that what Mr. Parker is doing at this meeting? Or, I'm just wanting to know, what is, especially if we're spending taxpayers' money to send him?
So, exactly, what is your question there?
My question, sir, is that, being that UNESCO, what, being that whatever this meeting is, and now you have a new chair to this committee, if the mayor doesn't assign someone on behalf of the city, is this the type of meeting where the city of Birmingham is represented, and then whoever is going there as that representative is mentioned? Or, it has to be something more to this meeting? You don't just show up to a meeting and there's no clarity in terms of who you are and what you're representing?
Let me, I'll be happy to respond, once I get information from the mayor. If you could reduce your comments to writing, I'll be sure and get it to the mayor.
Well, but if you want my vote now, then I'm not gonna reduce anything to the mayor in writing, because that-
Ma'am, I'm not asking for your vote.
I understand, Mr. Patton, with all due respect. But I'm saying, if you asking me for my vote now, you don't ask me for my vote now and get a understanding later. That's not mutual respect in terms of what I do as a council member. So, I'm just trying to understand. This meeting obviously should encompass or include this council member as the chair of that committee. I'm trying to get a better understanding, since Mr. Parker is not paying for himself, the taxpayers are paying for him. So, I wanna know, what is this meeting? Is he going as a representative of the city? And if so, why isn't the chair of the committee not going to represent the city? And then, if it's all that, how about we, Mr. President, just take that, this particular item out until we can get an answer? But I don't believe in, I'm gonna reduce anything to writing with all due respect, and vote on it, and then go get an answer later. That's not the way we do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, you all hold your applause in the audience. Counselor Tyson?
Even with the civil rights trail, I've always been a part of Park and Rick Committee. When they, when they went to DC, he took Jay Robinson and Parker. I was on that committee. I was notified. I didn't know anything about it. You know, I just, I'm just tired of sitting on a council. And as a woman, my voice cannot be heard. I can't, you know, say, I don't know nothing about the meetings. And then, you know, how can you overlook me? And I'm the only woman on the committee, but everyone else had an opportunity to go to DC with the civil rights trail. And that's not right. I could've went up there. I would've even paid for myself, because I'm older than Jay and Parker. And I participated in the civil rights movement. My parents was foot soldiers, and so I belonged there more than they did. And I was overlooked. And I just feel like it's because I was, I'm a woman, that I'm being overlooked. And then, I'm black too, so that ain't helped none.
Well, we need to delay this item for a week. Do you have a motion for a one-week delay?
Some move?
Second.
Okay, Lundey, I'm sorry.
Scales.
Counselor Scales and Counselor Lundey.
Counsel Tyson, say, respect it or check it?
All right. The vote is open. Counsel, okay. The vote is up.
That item will be delayed for, what, Counsel Rafferty, you didn't vote, you don't have, you don't-
This is the second time that it didn't vote, I'm about to-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
All right, that item passes for a one-week delay. Now we're done with the, um-
We have item number fifty-seven.
What now?
We have item number fifty-seven, on page fifteen.
Yes, there we go.
All right, item number fifty-seven, is a resolution setting a public hearing June twenty-first, twenty sixteen, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand sixteen zero 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 six, to change zone district boundaries from M-three planned industrial district to M-one light industrial district filed by Todd Wilson, representing owner Tomlin Rental Properties LLC, for the properties located at forty-seven hundred, forty-eight hundred, and forty-nine hundred East Lake Boulevard, situated in the northeast quarter of section seventeen, seventeen South Two West, and southeast quarter of section eight, Township Seventeen South Two West, Birmingham, and this is a first reading item.
We have a mover and a second.
A move approved.
Second.
All right. We're ready to vote.
Okay. Voting has started. The vote is up.
That item passes, next item, should be down to the mayor's report.
Okay.
Mr. Patton?
Did you all do number one?
Yeah.
Item one?
We delayed it for four weeks.
Oh, okay, sorry, wasn't paying attention.
That's all right.
Um, the Birmingham Police Department has recently received its ninth national accreditation. We have Vince Duriel from Commission, the Commission on Accreditation Law Enforcement Agencies here to make official presentation. Chief, can you and your group come forward, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, known as CLEEA, Commission Chair Chief Richard Myers and the Executive Director, Mr. W. Craig Hartley, Jr., I thank you for welcoming me to present the March twenty sixteen Accreditation Award to the Birmingham Police Department. CLEEA was created in nineteen seventy-nine, when founding organizations, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Association of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriff's Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum, recognized the need within the law enforcement community to develop professional standards to enhance the delivery of police services to the citizens throughout the communities they serve. CLEEA is the only internationally recognized public safety accrediting body in existence, we serve the United States, Canada, Mexico, and Barbados. Since its inception, CLEEA has accredited over one thousand agencies under standards developed by many of the best public safety practitioners and leaders of our time. Gaining internationally accredited status is a distinction held by very few, as there are over eighteen thousand law enforcement agencies in the United States alone, and that equates to just below five percent of the agencies in the US that are accredited. These standards cover a wide range of administrative, operational, logistical issues, and serve as a modern management model that provides a framework for recognizing professional excellence within public safety. The goals of CLEEA are to strengthen crime prevention and control capabilities, formalize essential management procedures, establish fair and non-discriminatory personnel practices, improve service delivery, and solidify inter-agency cooperation and coordination, and also increase community and staff competence in their agency. Many agency heads are reluctant to have outsiders review their work and their administrative processes, then detail any deficiencies the agency may have. It involves risk, it also requires the agency to be open to change so they can demonstrate they work and conduct business in a way that meets contemporary law enforcement standards. Chief Roper thinks otherwise, and understands that CLEEA accreditation minimizes his agency's exposure to liability, it demonstrates accountability to the public, and it guarantees professional management practices. In practical terms, the chief believes it confirms their commitment to excellence in law enforcement. Based on the goals and mission statement of CLEEA, I can find it no better time to present this accreditation certificate than to a very public meeting of the city council, where everyone can recognize the hard work that the agency has committed toward accomplishing this goal. The certificate itself is simply a matted paper within a frame, but it has a much better and larger symbolic meaning. The certificate clearly represents the agency's efforts to achieve accredited status, thereby demonstrating its willingness to change in order to effectively address contemporary public safety concerns. It represents commitment to doing the right thing and doing it the right way. It represents adherence to a professional code. Lastly, it represents an ongoing dedication to ensuring that the agency's resources are appropriately developed, effectively deployed, and constantly managed, all in the name of a safer city for citizens and visitors alike. On November sixteen through nineteen, twenty fifteen, two professional assessors visited the Birmingham Police Department, they reviewed the agency's applicable files, activities, and functional impacts, and management strategies. The assessors determined the agency's compliance with all applicable standards. They also noted the department is very involved with its community, and enjoys positive relations with its citizens and community institutions. The assessors spoke with several members of the community during a call-in session and public hearing. These contacts displayed the fact that the citizens are supportive of the agency, and the agency is connected to not only their citizens, but other law enforcement agencies statewide. The assessors found that the agency's personnel were proud to be members of the Birmingham Police Department, and were reflective of a professional attitude with a high sense of service to the community. At the commission meeting held in St. Louis, Missouri on April two, two thousand sixteen, the CLEEA Commission reviewed the assessor's report, concurred with their findings, and unanimously voted to re-accredit the agency. This is the police department's ninth award for advanced law enforcement accreditation, CLEEA's highest level of accreditation. This is also a meritorious designated award for over twenty-four continuous years of accreditation, uh, and if I'm correct, Birmingham was the first internationally accredited city within the state of Alabama. At this time, I would like to invite forward Chief AC Roper and Lieutenant Linda Woods to receive the CLEEA accreditation certificate. Note that none of this would be possible had it not been for the hard work performed by Chief Roper, his command staff, as well as all members of the agency. And if I may say as well, there's no way for an agency to become accredited without the backing and the support of the governing body and the citizens. I know they can see me because there's a camera here, usually I like to turn around and see them, because it's very, very important, it takes everyone to do this. It's a lot of hard work, uh, we believe that it's, that it's worthwhile, and it proves that your agency wants to do the right thing for the right reason. So if I may read this and present it to the, the chief. Be hereby known that the Birmingham, Alabama Police Department, having fully demonstrated its voluntary commitment to law enforcement excellence, by living up to a body of standards deemed essential to the protection of the life, health, and safety and rights of the citizens it serves, and having exemplified the best professional practices in the conduct of its responsibilities for over fifteen years, upon the recommendation of the members of the commission, is awarded this certificate of advanced meritorious accreditation, effective the twentieth day of March twenty sixteen, this is their ninth award. Congratulations. Also have a couple of, of smaller ones, this is a very hard process, and, and it takes leadership from the top to do this. Without the chief's dedication to his community, to his governing body, to his citizens, this could not be done, it takes a lot of work. So we have a separate certificate that we like to give to our CEOs, the Chief AC Roper is an expression of gratitude for your contribution to the law enforcement accreditation program as the leader of an accredited agency. Then we have a second for Lieutenant Woods, now, there always has to be a scapegoat in every process. The accreditation manager is that, uh, there always has to be one person within the ranks who has to make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. If it goes bad, it's her fault, if it goes good, the chief gets credit, so we have to give her a little credit, and it's the same thing, is an expression of gratitude for your contribution to law enforcement accreditation program as an accreditation manager. And may I say personally, I've been involved with the Birmingham Police Department in my previous life as a foreign law enforcement officer, and I know that, uh, looking back at the history, this is probably the cleanest on-site that the department's ever had, and it's the work of all the people standing here, including the ones that are out in the field writing tickets right now, to make sure that it's done properly and the best services to the community. Thank you very much.
Let me say very quickly, thank you Vince and CLEEA, uh, for this outstanding designation, and I also want to thank the command staff, the accreditation unit, and every officer and every professional staff member that's out there working selflessly right now. We couldn't bring them all in the room, but they're the ones that make it go, uh, the people are the engine of the organization, it's an honor, uh, to serve in this capacity, and we just salute them for what they do and for this amazing distinction. When Vince said less than five percent of the law enforcement agencies are internationally accredited, that's absolutely true, because most chiefs I talked to won't put themselves under this microscope, it is hard work, it's hard, but our citizens deserve it, and our city deserves it, so, so thanks to all.
Counsel Scales, before you all leave, hold on one second.
I was about to say, I'm sure you're not gonna make that kind of presentation and then just read. So, come up, chief, and you too, sir? Yes, sir? Well, first of all, uh, it's good to know that, that you are Birmingham-breded, I, I don't, I wouldn't say born, because I don't know if you were born here, but I, I did hear you clearly say that you were a part of our Birmingham Police Department, is that correct?
Part of Huntsville's Police Department, but worked very closely with Birmingham, and both my kids came to school down here, so my car knows how to get to Birmingham.
Well, I want to thank you, uh, for awarding our fabulous Birmingham Police Department, uh, with this honor, um, I will say that, um, chief, hope make it not a shame, so for all the folk who laughed at all the prayer walks, this is what you get in return. I said on last week to my students that, um, uh, when people said we need more Birmingham police on the ground, we do, but we need moms and dads, and we need the village to be on the ground even the more, because when we were growing up, your job wasn't as necessary as it is today. So our greatest police force is mom, dad, and the village, uh, but I want to tell all of you all, because I know that a lot of people, I was really impressed when we met back in February, because I didn't mo- know most of our, uh, deputies are at retirement eligibility, which means folk, they can go home, and they chose to stay here. So I'm telling you from the bottom of my heart how much I appreciate you willing to stay beyond retirement age, because most of us look to retire, and then we want to live our own life, but you choose to still sacrifice and to be here for us, and like you said, for those who are not present, even those who are being viewed as security, uh, I do appreciate Birmingham Police Department, and I do think in this budget, uh, that it's gonna be reflective of how much we really appreciate, sir, the gentlemen and the women, hard-working folk, that you just accredited, uh, and, and to show our real appreciation to them in a very tangible way, because when I heard the chief talk about how many, um, uh, crimes have been solved, and I said, shoot, well, we behind on our office of public information, Ms. April Odom, so can you please help us to get more of that out, because people need to know, we actually solving crimes. I, I thought that other police departments may have been solving them a little bit faster than us, but come to find out, we doing an excellent job. So there's always work to do, there's always room to grow, but I want you to know from the bottom of this council member's heart, I really, really appreciate you, that's not a political saying, because when you do events, and you make your living outside of this place legally, then you have an appreciation, because I always have to have the police, you understand, so I do appreciate you, and I know that, uh, we can't say thank you enough, but tangible works and longevity pay and all that good stuff, uh, that's how we really appreciate you, so, am I talking in two conversations? Yes, I am, but I bet every last one of you all just got what I said, so thank you, sir, and, and I look forward to the tenth year consecutive that we gonna bring home the gold to the city of Birmingham, and chief, uh, I can't appreciate you, uh, even the more, keep doing what you do, keep being prayerful, I know that, uh, you have a daunting task, but you the man for the job, thank you, sir, thank you, Ms. President.
Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President, well, first thing I want to say is congratulations. There is a reason that you do not read about the Birmingham Police Department in the newspaper, and it's because we're willing to have people look at us and look at us intimately to make sure that we're doing things right, and so I'm very proud of the Birmingham Police Department, that doesn't mean I'm not gonna complain about noise enforcement and parking enforcement, all those things I routinely complain about, but I appreciate the job that the police department does, and in my neighborhood, we have crime, and it just always thrills me to see how fast arrests are made, usually within a few days, and I know it's not just because the criminals are dumb, I know it's because the police department is sharp, and you know, most of us that are in public service jobs just hear the complaints, you know, nobody ever says, wow, you did such a great job, usually it's, why didn't your people do this? You know, and so I'm very proud that you, y'all are again accredited, the department's been doing this process, what seems like forever, because I, I was a neighborhood officer and was interviewed, you know, way back when I was young, um, so I just want to say congratulations and keep up the good work, forgive me, I'm gonna keep on complaining about things that I see that don't get done to my level of, of desire, but thank you for what you do, you're all great.
And Chief Roper, I would, I would like, I want, I want you to really know, I know your job is hard, especially on the western side of town, and I know the, um, the officers that's over there, y'all are overworked, I don't see how you, I would be terrified, I can talk on the phone and to, and report all the incidents that's over there, and, and y'all need to catch, because I got y'all, I'm behind y'all, and y'all the one taking all the blows, and I know I'm afraid out there, and my cousin came in town, and, um, they met, uh, uh, was it Captain Williams, you a captain now, you, you get promoted, you-
Captain chief.
See there, you moving up so quick? They say y'all got the prettiest women policemen I've ever seen. So they got an opportunity to actually meet, uh, y'all was at some training and I went, and I came by and stopped, and they had an opportunity to meet y'all, but they were so impressed, and compared to their city where they're from, New York, and our police compared to theirs was just, you know, just so different, but I know you're working hard, and I know what you're dealing with out in the streets, just by looking at it out, out of my car window and the incidents that's happening in the neighborhood, and I know what y'all are faced with and the danger that y'all are actually, uh, situations that y'all are in, and it just, you know, it just, it makes me afraid, just knowing that y'all are out there, and knowing that these women are just on top of it, I, I'm really, really proud of y'all, y'all doing a, a really, really good job, and I know I worry you to death, I know I call you and just, I, I, I know I do, but y'all know that I be just, I'm just about sick of it, and you know it, uh, Chief Roper, about this, everything that's going on in these communities, and, but I know y'all are trying, and I know y'all are solving problems, but I don't want you to ever forget about Ms. Stubbs, that young lady that was, that's still missing, and, you know, I know you have a lot of more information that's on there, but that, it just have, I just cannot get that off of my mind about that young lady, but I want y'all to continue to try to find out exactly what happened to her, thank you so much.
Counsel Abbott?
Uh, yes, and I, I do have to say that some of the most memorable experiences that I have had as a councilman were the four ride-alongs I- were the four ride-alongs I did with each precinct in Birmingham when I was fairly new. I met people and saw things that I never even would have ever thought of. We followed a bloody trail down an alley where somebody'd been shot, one of the bad guys, he was trying to get away. I met a geek monster. I met some other people that, you know, in my, in my life, I have never been exposed to. So when you go out and ride with police officers, you, you appreciate the fear that can come in your, in your very soul when you don't know what's around the corner. And the officer that took me down the alley following the bloody trail probably wasn't supposed to let me do that. But you know, we did it. And I thought, gee, I'm the only one out here without a gun, you know? So, but I wanted to ask, I really wanted to ask if, if we have a police community review board? Do we, did we ever have one? Do we still have one? A made of citizens and police department personnel who get together and talk to each other?
There was a police community relations commission.
Is there still one?
No ma'am.
Okay, well, somebody asked me about that the other day. So I thought, wow, this is the opportunity to ask, but it, it's defunct then. So, thank you.
We do have a citizens' police academy graduation tonight.
Thank you.
And that just took of me, Councilman Abbott, for you to say geek monster. It might have just been somebody real hungry and that was a crew.
No, the police told me what it wa, what the person was.
Counselor Skiles.
Well, for, for those of us that may be a little challenged, which we all laugh because we know culturally that just means you strung out on crack, cocaine. So that's what a geek monster is. So Counselor Abbott was being real cool. But now, listen, let me tell you one thing that Chief, I wanted to say about, about you and this police force. I had a, I was a part of a class a couple of months ago, and I may have mentioned this to you before, Chief, in this setting. But it was where the marshals, and tell me if I'm correct, but it's like you, you put yourself in a position and you only have just a split second to make a decision in terms of how you respond to a situation. Did I tell you about how that changed my whole perspective of, of the police department? Okay, don't worry about it. I'm saying it again. How about that? I know I said it today. When, when I, you know, they said that you spend, it's either half a million or over a million dollars, but they put you in this, this in the round kind of thing. And then it gives you these different scenarios. And then you got to respond right quick. And I said, man, if I had to do that every day? See, because we take the fiery dots politically and words and all that kind of stuff. No, you all actually take real, real bullets. And it gave me a whole different perspective. But let me tell you what the marshals said about you, if I didn't tell you. And I'm going to say this publicly because I think that it will speak to the accreditation, that you didn't just get favors, that you actually earned it. They said, we have been working with your police chief for a very long time, even before he came to Birmingham. And he was always a standout. And they said, the folk who were over the marshals about how effective that when they had a fugitive that would cross the border and how when they came to Hoover, some of the things that you did and then how you brought that. And I said to myself, I said, wow, just imagine how well our police force would even do greater works if they had the kind of resources that our other outlying municipalities do. And I look forward to that day where you can outman, outgun, I'm not going to say outwork, but outman, outgun the bad guys. Where, where crime in Birmingham, we going to start having more of a resistance to say, we back you. When we said we want zero tolerance, we really got to mean that as a community. Because when you all start getting aggressive, I don't want to see you lined up in internal affairs because it might have been a friend. I want it to be where we are very, very serious as governmental leaders to protect you all that when you get out there and you do your job, you doing your job. And not just, oh, well, you know, that's just the police, man. No, we want to get away from that. So I support what Counselor Tyson is saying. And I know that this council as a whole believe in it. I look forward to us having more meetings, more dialogues. Because I'm telling you, I'm not interested in looking like President Obama and the crew. I'm interested in crime being stopped, at least on some level in Birmingham, and you having the resources to be able to do it. And then we back you. That when things happen, we don't cry foul and then make you feel like, you know, you need to be afraid to do your job. We want you to do your job. And don't forget, Chief, I'm still looking forward to those incremental shot spotters in terms of the cost. Because the council is committed, we going, we going to help y'all. And y'all do an excellent job. And like I said, thank you, sir, for this accreditation. Nine years going strong. And I think that that says a lot for our Birmingham Police Department. We didn't miss a beat. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chief, you want to introduce your team before you all leave?
Yes, yes. Everybody, let's, let's do a little introduce yourself and tell them what you do.
Deputy Chief Henry Erby.
You know the drill, Erby.
Deputy Chief Henry Erby. I'm in charge of the Investigative Operations Bureau.
Deputy Chief Alan Hatcher in charge of the Field Operations Bureau.
Captain Corey Hardeman, the Assistant to Deputy Chief Hatcher.
Lieutenant Dennis Shepherd, I'm the Assistant to Deputy Chief Erby.
Captain Theophilus Smith, I'm assigned to the chief's office as his executive assistant.
Officer Martin Trammell, I'm with the Accreditation Unit.
Captain Willis, retired Member of Accreditation Unit.
Officer Kalisha King, Accreditation Officer.
I'm Lieutenant Linda Woods, I'm the Accreditation Manager.
I'm Sergeant Tywanna Jackson, I'm with the Accreditation Unit. And I was the du'er.
Captain Ashonda Howard, Assistant to Deputy Chief Irene Williams, Support Services Bureau.
I'm Deputy Chief Irene Williams, over the Support Service Bureau.
Lieutenant Andrew Doyle, Executive Assistant to Deputy Chief McCaskey, Administrative Bureau.
Jamal McCaskey, Deputy Chief Administrative Operations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, we have our Mrs. Scotty Colson here of our office, who is a part of the Sister City Commission to come forward and give us information on the upcoming trip to Japan.
Konnichiwa, y'all. We have a group of young people who will be going to Japan. Since 1984, we estimate 230 Birmingham students have visited Japan as part of this program. It's basically every other year, our kids go there. And then every, the opposite years, their kids come here. I'd first like to introduce Mark Jackson, who is Chair of the Birmingham Sister City Board. And then he will introduce Patina Burgeaus, who's Chair-elect, who's going to be leading the delegation to Hitachi.
Counsel, how are you this morning?
Good morning.
Chief Roper already left. That's one of the reasons why our city's on the global stage. What a wonderful job he does. And it's a great thing for us to travel across the world of sister cities to talk to them about how Birmingham has grown up and changed in the very short lifetime that I had been here. Wonderful city, wonderful leadership. Folks, I want to thank y'all for the support that you also have given us. What you have in your hand is a first annual report, nothing we've ever done for you. Gives you a, a good idea about what we have done in the last 12 months. Some of the highlights, obviously, were SUSE Japan, Southeast US Japan Conference that was held here for the first time in 20 some odd years. Had 400 Japanese companies that came to Birmingham. A big handful of dignitaries from Japan. And what we understand is a lot of business got done. As the tone was set by Pastor Woods from Grace Christian Church earlier, I think that sister cities, with looking at commercial development, economic development for the city of Birmingham, has proven that that's the direction that we need to go. And I want to thank you all for your support in that. In fact, one of the visits that I made to Japan quite recently, I was able to introduce one of our companies, Concert Care, who is a telemedicine company, to the city of Mabashi. Mabashi has become the healthcare information center in Japan. And they're looking at welcoming Concert Care in an office coming to Mabashi. Also, there is a, there's a Mabashi company looking to come to Birmingham as well. Along with other things that have happened with, with Japan, as you know, that we had back in October of last year, we had the signing of the Birmingham Liverpool Sister Cities Commission, Sister City Agreement. That not only has focused on our histories together, our long, deep histories together, but also brought an, a, an element of commercial development as well. Southern Research was able to go visit and bring back several million dollar contract for them. And a partnership with a Liverpool company, Concert Care, as I mentioned earlier, is actually opening an office during International Festival for Business in July, excuse me, in June. There's also a company, Global Bi diagnostics, a Liverpool company, who is setting up shop and opening a business here in Birmingham. Pilson, Pilson, our sister city in the Czech Republic. Birmingham Boys Choir visited there for a European tour kickoff. And that was actually the beginning of Pilson's year as the European capital of culture. Also, we are working with them, some brewers in Pilson, to come over and create a craft beer during our Beer Fest, either in June or in November. Once again, putting the finest things of Birmingham on the world stage. We also had a phenomenal opportunity to host some visiting folks from our sister city of Venetsa, Ukraine. A footnote, the president of Ukraine and now the new Prime Minister are all from the council and leadership of Venetsa, Ukraine. We also had an opportunity to show them a great deal about our city and how our city has making some big strides, especially in Enslie, Counselor Lundey. I thank you for your efforts there. And I really appreciate you accepting the position of being Birmingham's ambassador to Venetsa, Ukraine. They have taught to me several times since then and took back some great lessons learned and look forward to potentially a visit from you over to Venetsa very soon. They like what you have done. They like what we've done. Sheikh is very, very hungry. There has been a music festival. Our, our music ambassador, Eric Essex, has visited there and has had a great, great success. You can look through here and see what we've done. Our newest efforts revolve around Derry, Northern Ireland. Derry and all of Northern Ireland have credited the United States and the South and Birmingham and our civil rights movement with giving them lessons learned about their struggles. Marty Connor's not had a chance to visit Derry, not more than about three weeks ago. And what has gone on there, their, their civil rights march and their civil rights push against the British is very reflective of what we have gone through in our city. And a sister city program between them and us, from, as the words of their mayor, just makes sense for the past, the present, and the future. Also, we're working on a sister city in Jamaica. The city in Jamaica that we're looking at is also a healthcare hub. And that healthcare hub is already having partnerships with University of, University of Alabama in their medical and IT side. That's all well and good. Those are things that we have worked on. But I want you to look behind me at the product of what, what we are doing. These children are part of an exchange to Hitachi Kita High School. I've been to Hitachi Kita High School several times. I was, I gave a speech there. I was able to go back several months ago and visit some of the students that have come here. And the difference that is made in their lives coming to the United States, they will tell you, is indelible. They have, they're not able to quantify what, what will happen for the rest of their life. But I'd like to turn the microphone over now to our Vice Chairman, Patina Burgeaus, who also chairs our Japan Committee, who has organized this. Patina?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I am so excited to be here to show off our students. We will be traveling to Japan on Friday to Hitachi, which we've had a 35-year relationship with. And it has been nine years since we've had the high school exchange. When we sent the email to Dr. G with the Birmingham City School System, we immediately started getting applications. And then students from other schools outside of our system also asked to come. I actually got in a lot of trouble because I went to a, went to John Carroll when it was in the city of Birmingham and I did not send a letter to John Carroll. And we do not have any travelers at this time, but it became the hot thing to do for the summer. So each of the students filled out an application and they went through an interview process. Many of the students, specifically from Ramsey High School, were, were recommended by their principal. At Woodland High School, students were recommended by the academy, the business academy. And all of the students are stellar. Unfortunately, we're not going to have time for them to tell you all of their accolades because we would be here another couple of hours. But we would like them to tell you a little bit about themselves in terms of where they go to school and which district they live in Birmingham, if they're Birmingham residents. And I would like their families to stand afterwards. And I want to make sure that you have met our trip coordinator. And he may look familiar to some of you who've been around for a while. Lee Walker, used to Chair of the Birmingham Sister City Commission and Japan Committee. And I actually traveled with him when I was 22 to Japan. And so he came out of retirement to help us coordinate. And we have Colleen Kennedy, who is one of our chaperones. She's a UAB student. She speaks Japanese fluently. And so I'll have each of the students come up and introduce themselves to you.
I'm Demarcus Campbell. I'm a student, well, graduate of the Alabama School of Fine Arts.
And just, and what did you just go in at the Alabama Space and Rockets Center?
Okay, I'm also of a recent return. I just returned from the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair. I was selected as a finalist from that.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Lenson. I am in the IB program at Ramsey High School and I'm a junior.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jonathan. I, I am an uprising senior at Ramsey High School. Not in IB program, but I do take many AP classes. And I am one of, and I am the future teachers of Alabama program there.
Hello, my name is Billy Lauren Johnson. And I attend Woodland High School. I'm with the Academy Business and Finance Program. And I'm about to be a senior next year, so.
Hello, my name is Najah Williams. And I am an IB student at Ramsey High School.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Cooper. I attend Holy Family Christi, Catholic High School. I'm an upcoming senior. And I just recently got tapped into the National Honor Society. And, um.
Hello, everyone. My name is, is Alexis Nord. I'm a rising senior at Ramsey High School. I'd appreciate it if you guys not laugh. I do have a stutter. And also, I just got inducted into the National Honor Society, the National Business Honor Society, and the, the Muwa Alpha Theta. And I am the president of the, the, I run the, the, it's a Japanese club at Ramsey High School.
She speaks Japanese slowly. She taught herself Japanese.